And what a beautiful morning it is out there. Mr. Dan Phillips is gonna do our invocation and Mr. Turner is gonna do our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we first of all thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning and to be a part of this government. Father, you have ordained government even way back when Moses, when Moses' father knew that he needed help. And so, Father, for these men that have positioned themselves to be elected by the populace, not to rule and to govern, but to minister and to administer the affairs of this county, for those that are appointed to positions and sitting on the dais, for each and every one, Father, may they diligently, passionately call on you for wisdom and guidance, to show them, Father, how to lead this county from the positions in which they have. Father, I thank you for those that attend this meeting and, Father, I know that there are issues and topics that come up that passionately touch the hearts of so many people. But, Father, may we realize that we are in your presence and we do not have the right to be ugly. We can disagree, but, Father, we don't have the right to be verbally violent, but we want to be supportive. We want to speak from our heart and, Father, we want to see this county continue to grow and to get better. And, Father, we thank you for all, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hopefully, everyone's had the opportunity to look over our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of September 11th at your meeting, August 8th, August 14th, workshop and September 10th, special meeting.
We have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so moves. Okay, now, we're gonna hand this over to the sheriff's office. In the meantime, we can all just stare at Gator.
Good morning.
It's my distinct pleasure and honor to come before you today to recognize some of what I consider to be local heroes. As we contemplate history, we can all identify heroes that have done wonderful things. Alexander Fleming, for example, who discovered penicillin back in the early 1900s, and a multitude of others that we could name, but the reality of it is there are heroes among us that walk quietly among us every day, and it's my pleasure today to introduce a few of them to you and to recognize them for their service here locally to our citizens. So as they come up, I'd like to introduce them and then Colonel Wells will read the citation, following which we'll present them with their award. I'd first like to invite up Detective John Zager.
Detective Zager serves the citizens of Putnam County in the Putnam County Sheriff's Office as our background and internal affairs investigator. Detective Zager continuously goes above and beyond what is required when conducting background and internal investigations. He conducts numerous background investigations to ensure that we are hiring only the best employees to serve the citizens of Putnam County. In addition to his regular duties, he was additionally tasked with conducting the background investigations on all of the Putnam County School Board employees who have volunteered to be part of our guardian program. Just for comparison, in 2017, Detective Zager completed a total of 111 background investigations, and so far, in the first half of 2018, he has already conducted 99 investigations, many of those being the folks that will serve to protect our children in their schools. Knowing that there has been a deadline set to get the guardians vetted and trained, Detective Zager has worked many late hours above and beyond his normal scheduled days to help ensure that our schools have guardians in place at the beginning of the 2018-2019 school year. Even being given this additional assignment, Detective Zager's work ethic, dedication to the agency is always above reproach. For this, I feel that Detective Zager has earned the Sheriff's Achievement Medal. He was nominated by Major Johnny Greenwood, Director of Administrative Services.
Just on a personal note, I thought I worked a lot, but oftentimes, I come in on a Saturday or late in the evenings and I see John's light on in his office, toiling quietly at his computer, making phone calls, doing background investigations. This man probably travels more miles than anyone who is employed at the sheriff's office, from the northern part of Georgia all the way down to Monroe, as far as Monroe County, down in the Keys. John is all over the state and all over the southeast United States, doing in-person interviews to ensure that all of our employees and our guardians are thoroughly vetted so that we have the most qualified people working for us, and for that, he deserves our recognition.
Sergeant Bohannon is a shift leader in our Central District Patrol. This award recommendation is somewhat unusual and that it is not the result of Sergeant Bohannon's normal duty responsibilities. Sergeant Bohannon is a proud veteran of the United States Army, having served in the war against terrorism. Through his Army service and previous employment, Sergeant Bohannon became quite an accomplished mechanic in his proficient in auto body repair. Sergeant Bohannon developed a program at the sheriff's office that he envisioned could save taxpayer money. Through this program, every part possible is salvaged from patrol vehicles that have either been wrecked or have mechanical issues beyond repair. Those salvageable parts are then used to repair other vehicles. Through his mechanical expertise, Sergeant Bohannon performs much of the repairs in-house. As examples of this, parts from a vehicle with front end damage were used to rebuild the rear end of another patrol vehicle, and an engine that was salvaged from a wrecked patrol car was used in another one with a blown engine. Through his Army experience with armored vehicles, he also performs all of the routine maintenance and repairs on the special operations vehicles operated by the sheriff's office. These are all actions above and beyond Sergeant Bohannon's normal duties through a program that he developed himself that have most certainly saved the taxpayers of Putnam County tens of thousands of dollars. Sergeant Bohannon is hereby nominated by myself for the Sheriff's Achievement Medal.
Well, that pretty well sums it up, but I will tell you that as evidence of Chris's hard work, if you come out to the sheriff's office, we have a small fleet of cannibalized cars that are my most prized possessions, because every day that I look at them, I'm cognizant of the fact that Chris has saved us tens of thousands of dollars, a good portion of which comes directly back into the county's coffers and helps us out of our, some of our fiscal struggles. So for that, Chris was awarded the Sheriff's Achievement Medal.
Outstanding.
Next, I'd like to call up Captain Chris Stallings.
Captain Stallings is our district commander for the western portion of Putnam County, and on May 17th, 2018, Captain Chris Stallings was on his way to a training seminar in Flagler County when he came upon a single vehicle crash. It was reported to our communications center that one patient was an elderly female and that her breathing was almost nonexistent. Within seconds, the victim went into cardiac arrest. Without hesitation, Captain Stallings began life-saving measures on the patient by performing cardiopulmonary resuscitation. Captain Stallings continued with his CPR efforts until emergency medical services arrived on scene. EMS quickly took over the life-saving measures and transported the patient to a trauma center. On the way to the trauma center, EMS reported that they had gained a strong pulse back in the patient. As of this writing, the patient is recovering well. If it were not for the quick and selfless actions of Captain Chris Stallings, it is believed that this person would have succumbed to her injuries without assisted breathing and other measures performed by Captain Stallings. Captain Stallings is nominated for the life-saving award by Major Steve Rose, Director of Law
I'd now like to invite Deputy Doug Kennedy and Deputy Jacob Higginbotham to the podium.
You gotta tie your shoe first? On June 17th, 2018, the Putnam County Sheriff's Office Emergency Communications Center received a wireless 911 call for service. No location was immediately given, however, the communications operators did a wonderful job and were able to track the phone call to the area of Lakeview Trail and Pine Place in western Putnam County. The communications center could hear a subject screaming and running in the background. The caller reported that her friend was turning blue but could not provide the dispatch center with their current location. The communications center quickly triangulated the call and dispatched Deputy Doug Kennedy and Deputy Jacob Higginbotham. Deputies Higginbotham and Kennedy quickly arrived in the area and were flagged down by the complainant. Deputies Higginbotham and Kennedy observed a white male, unconscious and not breathing. The deputies, as a team, were able to provide the necessary information to the communications center to have emergency medical services also respond to the scene. Deputies Higginbotham and Kennedy were able to learn from people on the scene that the male had possibly taken a lethal dose of opioid drugs and was overdosing. Deputy Kennedy quickly determined that Narcan was necessary to reverse the overdose. Deputies Higginbotham and Kennedy worked together to deliver a life-saving dose of Narcan and provide the other medical services needed until the arrival of EMS. Sergeant Diamond Lewis, their sergeant who nominated them, writes that he sincerely believes that a life was saved in this incident because of the quick response of both deputies Higginbotham and Kennedy and their decision to administer the recently issued Narcan. They were able to keep a calm demeanor in a very stressful environment while preserving life, with many screaming and hysterical people around them. The patient regained consciousness, survived, is alive today and seeking assistance for his addiction issues. Like the sheriff said earlier, many of these men and women are unsung heroes and it's not likely that, you may have even heard of any of these actions, however, Master Deputy Jones's actions recently gained quite a bit of attention, and so, we're gonna follow that up today with his award recognition. On September 9th, 2018, Master Deputy Dennis Jones was off-duty and was skateboarding with his wife and family in Crescent City near the Coinomatic Laundry when he heard a woman screaming. Not knowing what the problem was, Master Deputy Jones rushed the area to assist. As he approached the area, he was able to hear a lady's voice screaming, "He's not breathing." Deputy Jones told the lady that he was a deputy sheriff and could help. The panicked mother placed a two-month-old baby in the arms of Master Deputy Jones. The baby was not breathing and was turning blue. Master Deputy Jones' training kicked in and he began performing life-saving measures. After performing techniques to clear the child, whose name is Christian's airway, Master Deputy Jones maintained a viable airway until Christian began breathing again on his own. While providing life-saving care, Master Deputy Jones assured that someone was providing the needed information to Putnam County 911 operators. Putnam Fire and Rescue responded to the scene and assumed the medical care of Christian. Christian was transported to a hospital where it was determined that he had suffered a seizure. Christian is recovering nicely due to the quick actions of the off-duty and very modest Deputy Jones. It is not likely that the sheriff's office would have ever known about this incident had the mother not come forward, reached out to us, so that we would know Deputy Jones's actions. This is just the modest way in which he always performs his duty, above and beyond. It's important to mention that this was a family affair. As Master Deputy Jones was performing life-saving care, his wife and children comforted and prayed with Christian's family. Because of his timely and selfless service to the citizens of Putnam County, resulting in saving the life of a fellow human being, Master Deputy Jones is hereby awarded the Life Saving Medal. This is not Dennis's first experience in saving the life. While serving as a youth resource deputy in Putnam County Schools, he performed the Heimlich maneuver on a choking child, and as a patrol deputy, he saved an overdose victim by performing cardiopulmonary resuscitation.
I'd now ask that Lieutenant Daniel Taylor and Captain Hansel Woods join me at the podium.
Captain Woods, for those of you who don't know, is our district commander in our southern district, and Lieutenant Taylor is his deputy district commander in our south district. On September 6th, 2018, Lieutenant Taylor heard a BOLO, which is a be-on-the-lookout from communications center, regarding a vehicle that was driving erratically. Within seconds, Lieutenant Taylor spotted the vehicle and performed a traffic stop. During the stop, Captain Woods arrived to provide assistance. At the conclusion of the stop, the driver began to experience a medical emergency. Rescue was requested and the driver's condition worsened as he lost consciousness while seated in the vehicle. The driver was removed from the vehicle and it was discovered that he was not breathing and had no pulse. Captain Woods began CPR, and after a short time, the driver began to regain a limited level of consciousness but remained unresponsive. Based on Lieutenant Taylor's interaction with the driver, he believed that the driver may have been experiencing some type of reaction to an opiate. Therefore, he deployed his issued Narcan on the individual, which had an immediate effect. Rescue arrived and quickly prepared the driver to be transported to the emergency room. It was later learned that the driver made a full recovery. If it were not for the attentiveness of Lieutenant Taylor by identifying and stopping the erratic vehicle, it is very possible the driver would have experienced his medical emergency at the wheel, resulting in disastrous situation for other motorists. In addition to, in addition to the quick response by Captain Woods and Lieutenant Taylor to identify the medical emergency, to provide CPR and the use of Narcan, it was later learned that this older gentleman had mistakenly taken his medicine two or three times instead of the one time that he was supposed to in the morning, resulting in an accidental overdose while operating a vehicle, which then again resulted in his loss of consciousness and no pulse. The use of the Narcan and CPR saved the gentleman's life, and we have worked with the family to make sure that his medication is administered in a more stable manner.
I'd like to invite all of the award, excuse me, all of the award recipients up to the front of the dais here for a photograph with all the commissioners, if it's your pleasure.
Yes, please.
I like him.
Some of them guys are taller than me and I'm a hole still.
Thank you for your time, and that concludes the presentation of our awards.
Thank you, Sheriff. Our pleasure. Just give a minute, let the officers go back to their duties.
Do you wanna handle this?
No, Lori Parker's going to.
Mrs. Parker, would you like to come forward and do these presentations, or would you like me to?
Press.
Oh, okay, my mistake.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
It's my great pleasure this morning to recognize Ms. Anita Cole from Public Works Department for Employee of the Quarter recognition. She's one of the silent people in the background that we depend upon so much to get all our background information done, to provide me with information, y'all with information. She is my liaison with the Planning and Development Division. She does our Rails-to-Trails and all our work there, coordinating that. She's an excellent employee. She sits back there and works all day, and halftime, I don't know she's there, but the work is getting done, and she goes far beyond what her job description is, and she does an outstanding job for us. So it's my pleasure to present her with the Employee of the Quarter Award for this quarter.
I just wanna say, together we make this county a great county, and we have to work together as a team, because the citizens don't know the rules and regulations, and we have to teach them that we're here for them, and that's just my philosophy. We just need to show them what the regulations are, and we can do the best we can with what we've got. Thank you.
Mrs. Cole, what about the commissioners?
I love the commissioners, not all of you guys sometimes, but...
Mrs. Cole is one employee who will tell you no quick. You're not doing anything.
No, I follow the rules. I'm a rule follower.
Is that your straight or is it a false call? Congratulations.
No larger call. Congratulations, Anita.
Good morning.
Well, good morning.
How are you guys today?
Doing great.
I'm here to present the employee service recognition. This is done every quarter at five-year intervals, and for this quarter, I'm gonna call up, I believe there's five people, and present the award if Mr. Goddard would come up.
I sure will.
Thank you. The first one is Prissy Fletcher. If she could come up. Sharon Treen is out of town, so she couldn't make it, but Prissy's here. Prissy is the Horticultural Extension Agent, and she's been here since 2013, and she, most of you know, she works for the University of Florida County Extension Office. She's celebrating five years of service.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes. The next one I'd like to call up is William Osteen.
Hey, Will.
Hey, Will. Will is celebrating five years of service with General Services. He's a trades worker, and he's been here since 2013.
He keeps us cool.
The next one is Matt Thompson. He's from Sanitation. If Matt could come up. Matt is celebrating 10 years of service with Sanitation. He's a landfill operator, and he's been here since 2008. Next on the list is Margaret Ehrenberg. Margaret, Margaret works for the library. Margaret is celebrating 15 years of service, and she's a library clerk, and she's been here since 2003. She works at the Melrose Library, in case some of you have recognized her in the area. Thank you. And last on the list, Mark Bozard. Mark has been here 20 years. Mark works with Fleet Maintenance, and he is the CDL Senior Mechanic. He's been here since 1998. The commissioners would come down for a photo?
You want us to stay up here with her? No?
We'll have to get a little closer. Little family. Y'all just get shoulder to shoulder on this.
Alrighty.
That's what I do.
He likes everyone.
Congratulations. Congratulations, sir.
That's the happiest face ever.
I don't have any blue cards up here, but if you want any public comments, just please come to, your name and your address. Seeing no public comment, I'm gonna close that section and move to our consent agenda. Mr. Turner?
I have none today.
Mr. Libel?
Same, none.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Harvey?
Did you see that? I have none, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I have none either.
Mr. Chairman, based on that, I make a motion that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through Q.
Second.
Okay, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It was unanimous. And Mr. Tim Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no items today, but I would like to make some comments at the end of the meeting, please.
Okay, we'll hold them to the end. Okay, so it is exactly 9:30, so we can move to our public hearing.
That's a first.
Congratulations, sir.
He is not as quick as Commissioner Pickens, but he is quick.
We're gonna nominate him for chairman of the quarter.
Mr. Pickens taught me everything.
Brutal around here.
What does that comment you always make? He's just not as funny as he thinks.
That's exactly right.
All right, well, who is actually handling our public hearing?
That'll be Melissa.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a continuation of the public hearing that we began on September tenth regarding the new purchasing procurement policy ordinance. At our September tenth meeting, there was a suggestion made to add some language regarding small businesses and the encouragement of small businesses. And I believe in your packet, you will see an underlying strike-through version that demonstrates where this language has been added. And with that, I would just open it up to any additional questions, since we covered quite a bit on September tenth.
Give them just a minute.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Dillon, I want to thank you. I want to thank our administrator, our attorney, and everybody that worked on this. It's been a long time coming that this new procurement policy has been in place. And I think we've got a great document here, and we have added the veteran small businesses, and Commissioner Turner recommended small businesses from one to fifty. I think this is an excellent document to promote our businesses here in Putnam County to do business with our county. And I appreciate this document more than you know, so thank you.
Commissioners, Mr. Pickens, did you have a comment?
I'd just also like to thank Melissa and her staff for this, as Commissioner Harvey was saying, it was a long time coming, so I'm glad it's in place, and hopefully it worked for us well.
I think before a motion, I think you have to ask for public comment.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate that. I was just making sure that I didn't have any commissioners' comments. Okay, this moment, we will have public comment on this ordinance. Again, I'll open it up for any public comment on this ordinance. Seeing none, I'll close that portion.
Mr. Chairman, and just if I might, just for clarification, so everybody knows, we, there was a number of definitions of small business in the statutes. We found quite a few of them, but the one that you all felt was most appropriate and that we used was the definition in Florida statutes that apply to work comp situations or work comp requirements. So, that's where we pulled that definition from, and it is consistent with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval and adopt the proposed ordinance, repealing ordinance number 2005-35 as amended, and it's entirely replacing it with this new procurement ordinance.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, unanimous, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, any appointments? Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir, on the fair authority, I'd like to reappoint Renee Hubb to the, for District Three.
Good choice. Mr. Harvey?
I have none right now.
Mr. Libel?
I have none. Fair Authority District Two, Charles Harrington.
And Mr. Pickens, you have none. Okay, and I also have none. This is just going way too easy today. All right, so we will move to our county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with y'all, I think I'll reserve my comments for the 5:05 meeting tonight.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so I have, let's see. I guess I will move to Mr. Tim Smith at this time. No, no, excuse me, county attorney. I jumped.
Yeah, just briefly, I'm sure you all know this already, the Fifth District Court of Appeal did finally rule on the ongoing case that the county and the canvassing board and the supervisor of elections have been involved with from the 2016 sheriff's race, that very close election. The Fifth DCA did affirm the lower court's decision in that the election was conducted properly and canvassed properly, and that Mr. Deloche is our sheriff and will continue to be so. So, we're very happy to finally bring that to a conclusion. From what I understand, there has been an indication by the plaintiff that there is not an intention to further appeal that matter. So, I think it's really good for our community to have some closure in that matter, and for the community to see that, as close as it was, and as difficult as it was, that matter was handled correctly, and everybody can sleep a little better at night knowing that.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, our community lost a dear friend to many of us in this room, Susan Hodge. And as a dear friend of my family, and particularly my wife, Darlene, who has really taken it very hard, I wanted to recognize the Hodge family as really a great community family. And if you were, if you knew them, or if you attended the viewing the night before the funeral, and just saw the outpouring from this community, it would make you proud to know that you live in a county, a community, a city that cares as much as this one did for that family. And in attending the service at St. Monica's, I rarely go in a funeral procession, but I did, and I was extremely proud of our community, of the cars that stopped, of the sheriff's office escort, and of the police department escort of that funeral procession, and the dignity in which the officers stood at attention when the family went by. It really made me proud to know that this community, in a time of need of a family, would stand up with them and support them. So, I wanted to express my thanks to everyone that made that happen for the family and for my friends, and I thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Libel?
I can't believe this meeting's this short this morning.
Don't look a gift horse in the mouth.
That's right, we'll be going all day. Mr. Chairman, I really have nothing this morning. Mind everybody to Bartram Frolic this weekend, I'll give a shout-out for that. It's going to be a lot of activities down on the riverfront, and worth visiting, for sure. And then we have a reenactment, I do believe, at the Bronson Mahoney House. So, maybe I do have some things to say. But I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Couple of items, just want to shout-out, the Rotary Club of Crescent City is having its annual, its twenty-sixth annual Swine and Wine BBQ fundraiser at Wasnowski Farms, formerly Wasnowski Farms, now Crescent Lake Farms, October sixth, Saturday, from six to eleven p.m. You can see me, four tickets. It will benefit youth sports and the Rotary Club's education fund. And I'd like to make a comment about Officer Jones, Dennis Jones, to Gator and to Colonel Joe Wells. The statement you said about him being so humble is true. I attend church with he and his family at South Putnam Church, and you would never know that he had done such an act of kindness and bravery to save that child's life. He came in the last two weeks, and you wouldn't even know that he had done anything. So, he's a good officer to have in this county, we're very lucky. And I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that one week ago, today, my son Ian and his wife Shanae had their first child, Isabella Rae, seven-pound, twenty-inch-long little girl, and yes, she is a princess. So, but the child and mother, everybody's doing fine, and it had already changed our lives, and everybody has told me that grandchildren are fantastic, they are one hundred percent correct. So, thank you, and now I will be a pop-pop as soon as she can talk. Thank you.
Yeah, that's official. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate Grandpa Commissioner Pickens. Pop-pop Commissioner Pickens. I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I may. I can see from talking to people on the street and what have you, that we are making a lot better effort at returning our phone calls. I appreciate that, especially when people call you just to tell you they got a returned phone call. I mean, it's a pretty good deal. So, I know it's very difficult in the swing of things to do that, but I appreciate the effort that's being made, I can see it. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request for our third Thursday, third Tuesday workshop of next month, at least a section of that be dedicated to the building department. Mr. Sioffi has been here long enough to get in the swing of things and know what's going on, and I think that I'd like to have a commissioner review of where we are and where we think we're headed. I'm sure that everybody gets the same complaints that I do, maybe not, because I'm a contractor also, so I'll probably catch it a little worse, but I'd just like, maybe for, if he could make a presentation now of where he thinks we should go next and how we should get there, if that's okay with everybody? Is that okay with you, Mr. Sioffi? Give you enough time? Okay, thank you. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we attended the Taste of the Tater over at Blue Sky Farms, and I would encourage you, we were asked to encourage our residents to ask our local grocery stores to carry local produce. So, when you're out and about at your local grocery store, make sure you ask for local produce grown in this area. It benefits us all when we do that. They had some really cool red, purple, sweet potato-looking things, and they were very tasty and very good, and it was a well-attended event, and those farmers are really trying to always recreate themselves to be better stewards of the land. Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I would not recognize our county administrator. It's been a year since you've been here today, and want to say happy anniversary. Thank you for coming over, and thank you for the difficult year that you've had trying to do all the things that we required of you. I don't, I couldn't imagine trying to work with five type-A personality people that always demand of you, and you're always trying to do what's best for, I know for me and the rest of us. Sometimes we might get a little vocal, but I do appreciate the opportunity to work with you and bring all these projects in for a landing that you do. So, I want to say thank you, Mr. Suggs, and congratulations on your one-year anniversary. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't going to say anything, but I appreciate that, and I'm going to piggyback a little bit on the Honorable Tim Smith's comments. For those of us who were in attendance last week at Ms. Hodge's service, there was a word that was used, and the word was gratitude. And I'll just sit here today, and I'll tell you the gratitude that I feel, not only for you five elected officials, but for all my constitutional officers out there, for all the help and assistance they've given me this year, but most of all, to my staff for the hard work and dedication that they provide, not only to me and you folks, but to this community. And, you know, it's just very gratifying to be able to sit here today and be the county administrator of Putnam County, very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I got one more I don't want to overlook, but Press, I want to thank you and your mowing crew for working the last couple of weekends and getting us caught up. The roadsides are looking much better, and thank those responsible for their extra effort, please.
That's right. That kind of took some of my thunder, because I was going to thank him. It is so good, even coming in today to see the crews out there mowing, and we're not getting the phone calls, I'm not even getting it. What I was getting is anytime I went to any restaurant or store or anywhere, they let me know about our mowing and our roads. But, it's just a wonderful, I know I say this constantly, but I so enjoy living in this county. And our staff is incredible. I fail to understand how the ball got dropped years ago, and because the staff now is just so great, I can't see how they could have had any complaints. But, anyway, they did, and they don't now, and it's a good thing. And I'm so happy that we've retained our sheriff. I know that's got to be very happy for you and your family. But, overall, such as the funeral, which is sad, this county is an incredible county, and they do pull together, and they care very much for each other. And, so I'm just glad to be here. And with that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I really, I meant to start my comments earlier, so I want to go back to that. Tomorrow is my forty-third wedding anniversary.
Oh, my!
And so... Well, that applause is for Darlene, I know. But, you know, what, yeah, what do you give a woman that already has everything? I'm not real sure, but I can say thank you, so that's what I wanted to do.
Breakfast in bed.
No, she's got to go to work.
All right, well, with that, our meeting is closed. Oh, no, it's recessed, excuse me. It is recessed until 5:05. Thank you. We'll go ahead and call our meeting back to order. I guess we can start right out with Ms. Papel.
Shall I, Mr. Suggs?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I was reading. You go right ahead.
All right. You have before you tonight the budget. It is the second public hearing. There were no changes to the millage, to either millage, to the aggregate millage, none of that. There was one change when I was preparing the ad, I found one revenue that didn't pull in to the Roads and Bridges Capital Fund, and so I added that. You'll see in the agenda item, it was $316,000. That allowed for an increase in spending in that fund. That changed the percentage increase in the budget to 14.81 percent. It was advertised with the correct numbers, and you have it before you tonight with the correct numbers.
All right, do we have any comments? No, then we'll move to public comment. Okay, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that section.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the fiscal year 2018-19 Putnam County-wide operating millage rate of 9.5946 mills, which is 2.63 percent higher than the calculated rollback rate of 9.3483 mills. The fiscal year 2018-19 non-county-wide operating millage for the fire tax unit, municipal servicing taxing unit of 1.1 mills, which is the same as last year's millage rate, this rate is 5.88 percent higher than the rollback rate of 1.0389 mills. Together with the aggregate millage is 10.5643 mills, which is 2.93 percent higher than the aggregated rollback rate of 10.2639 mills.
Okay, so we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a proper first, a proper second.
Okay, just to be clear, this is the motion needed to pass the Mill Levy Resolution, which you are doing first.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay. Okay, so let's move to...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution adopting the final fiscal year 2018-19 county budget for all amount, for all funds in the amount of $134,126,212.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's also unanimous.
Thank you.
So that concludes the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, will, I'd like to offer a motion to pass the five-year capital improvement.
Second.
Plan.
Under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
After our workshop this afternoon, it stated this had to be passed every year as part of the transportation ordinance or what have you. So this can be changed without, just as we go along. It's just like a fluid document that we just keep adding and subtracting from as we go, correct?
That is correct, sir. If there's amendments that needed to be made, we can bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners at that time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. So we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Now, we also have our public works request. Has everyone had a moment to look at this?
Just for the record, this is a, was, is a previously tabled administration item from last month, I believe, prior commission meeting for approval of a contract.
That's correct. What we, what we have in front of you is, is our contract for material runs out September 30th. We're asking for it to extend the contract for us to be able to buy the lime rock only at this point in time, and we're still working on the shell rock contract. But anyway, we're asking for the extension of the lime rock contract at this time.
Okay, and just so that we do clarify that on the contract, shell has been struck out of the contract.
Yes, sir, it has.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
No, you have to, I'm sorry, you have to ask for a public input before I make a motion. I was gonna make a motion, is what I...
Okay, I thought you had a comment.
My mistakes are not yours.
Okay, no problem. Okay, any public comment for or against this? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the lime rock portion of the contract.
No, uh, yes, right, lime rock.
I'll second it.
So we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so approves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, we'll start with Mr. Libel, who have any comments?
None.
Okay, Mr. Pickens?
I'm good, just thank staff for all the hard work and get this budget passed.
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
I have none, Mr. Chairman, like you.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
I do want to thank staff and everyone for all the hard work on this. And again, thank you, Mr. Suggs, for your one-year anniversary with us today. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you for all the work, thank you for the budget, it's great. And thank you, everyone, for being here. And we're adjourned.